You're watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM daily. Visit us often on the web at www-allaboutalpena.com. Once there, you can email us with your thoughts, concerns, questions, and of course we have our updated schedule there. Or feel free to call us at (354) 2295.
These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the weight of the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jet into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, July 7th, 2014. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic through which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of closed session June 2nd, 2014, and regular session of June 16th, 2014. With no changes or revisions. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you have, if you would like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
My name is Chuck Pincuski, 615 K Street. And I'm not here to complain about anything or like that. I'm here to give some praise tonight. I know this last week and a half has been tough on the police department with all the fireworks that were going on. Lot of it was illegal stuff. I know because I used to dabble in it myself. But anyway, I had called Joel on it, I think on Monday morning. And he said he's had some complaints also, so they were going to sit down and do, talk about it. And by 5 o'clock that night, he had gotten back with me and what they were going to possibly do, so. But after he had talked to me, it didn't completely stop. But it was reduced by a great amount. So I don't know if the word got out that the officers were on patrol for him or what, but it went down a lot. And I appreciated it. Not because it bothered me. It drove my two beagles absolutely nuts. I mean, if you've seen them, I mean, normally they're very docile dogs unless they're out in the woods. But they were going completely bonkers, so. After that, I, with his officers doing their job, things quieted down a lot and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks Chuck. Thank you Chief. Excuse me. The consent agenda this evening, A are bills to be allowed in the amount of $746,957.31, and B approval of the reelection of the three incumbent trustees to the Michigan Municipal League 2014 Workers Compensation Board of Trustees.
We approve the consent agenda presented.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, no announcements, proclamations, no reports of officers, communication, no communications petition? No unfinished business, on down to new business. 2014-15 service agreement between the city of Alpena and Target Alpena Development Corporation.
That's me. You have attached for your consideration the this year's service agreement between the city and Target. The proposed agreement mirrors the previous ones except that under the 2014-15 scope of services, the year's priority components of the Target Strategic Plan are listed as individual bullet items rather than kind of lumping them under that particular heading. The service agreement itself has been an effective tool for both the city and Target with specific tasks and benchmarks clearly defined. Accountability has been greatly increased through the introduction of quarterly meetings with city staff, quarterly progress reports to council, and semi-annual presentations at council meetings. Overall, the formalized relationship with Target under the service agreement has worked very well for both parties. The agreement that you have, if the council approves it tonight, will then be acted upon at tomorrow's Target Board meeting. And staff does recommend its approval and requests that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign it. I will also say just on my own behalf that my working relationship with Jim Claridge, the director, has been very good since Jim has been here. And we keep very, very close touch on all issues regarding economic development, as well as he does with Adam Paul, our new planning director. So that's been a very good relationship and we expect that to continue. And Jim is here if you do have any questions for him. Just in case the press doesn't know, the agreement does appropriate $40,000 for the coming fiscal year. That was in the approved budget. Same as last year.
I don't have any questions, but I have comments. About the good work that Target has done over the past year. I've been so impressed to see the dream of having a regional office start to come to fruition. And I'm very proud of that and I know you've worked hard on it. Appreciate it so much.
Yeah, same here, I guess I would just add that basically what Greg said, I hear from the business community, everybody in the chamber building, that not only, not only Jim Claridge, but the Target and that entire office works well with just about everybody and certainly city staff. Jim shows up at all the, you guys are well aware, at all the IG meetings and he's right in the thick of things and has worked well with the county commissioners as well. And Presskeel now, so it's fantastic.
Wow, we're swelling his head a little bit. I know there's a few businesses in Alpena that wouldn't be here or be coming here if it wasn't for Jim, so. You know, they don't just fall into our lap, you have to work to go get them and he's done that, so. I think we can all appreciate that.
Well said.
I too would like to thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
And you always hear it from me, so.
I gotta say it.
Some action on that then?
Anyone know that? I guess you don't have one. Sorry, no money, no goo.
I move we approve the service agreement with the Target Board in request that the mayor and city clerk sign the authorization on behalf of the, on the city's behalf.
Second.
Go ahead Susan.
No, you beat her.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you Jim, Greg. I just now noticed that there was a tie for first.
Oh yes, we have.
Under new business. So the second A will be.
The second A.
The United Water Contract Amendment. The second A.
United Water provides water at wastewater services. Has an existing contract with the city. Many times we need to amend that, modify that contract to do it via contract amendment. And United Water has to adhere to the TANES contract amendment, which basically will reduce the billing charge that they charge us from 1586, 1583.68 per month to $583.68 per month. But basically a thousand dollar deduction per month. Originally, we were going to eliminate this charge completely with new meters that went in. But because of the billing software that we were using in conjunction with Alpena Power Company, they use the same exact software. To try to do any conversion of that data to a new billing software, at the same time we're putting the new, going to remote read meters and doing that was not what we thought was a prudent process to follow. So what we elected to do was instead, we still use Alpena Power Company's computer services. They basically charge the $583.68 per month for that. And they do all, all the bill generation that then goes back to Mike. Now we will, we are using another company that will be generating the bill, but again, they will be accessing the data from Alpena Power Company's computer. Eventually, we do want to proceed forward to change over to a different billing software. But at that point in time, it was, we didn't want to take a chance on messing everything up with everything that was going on, so. This contract amendment addresses that. There is a $13,000 credit which would go back to last, the May of last year. And they would be issuing that as a credit on the June bill. On the July bill, excuse me.
Do we have a, do we have a timeline Rich, of when we're going to go to the new billing software? And the reason, you know, I'm concerned, obviously the 583 is great, that still comes out to about $6,900 in charges. I'd like to see it reduced from the 18 it was, but I'm just wondering, what do we have to invest in to, you know, basically reduce this charge to zero?
And Mike, I guess, Mike, he's, we've talked about this and I'd rather have you.
There's a timing issue. During the time that we were doing the meter change job, Alpena Power uses DAFRON as their software supplier. And we also use them. We're basically a customer to Alpena Power. We don't have a contract with DAFRON. We have a contract with Alpena Power. And they were having, they were upgrading their software at the same time that we happened to be doing the meter projects. So we were committed to going along with that upgrade and we had to sign a contract to get the upgrade, otherwise they wouldn't have supported the service. We are committed with our contract to the January 4th, 2015. And obviously, we've been using DAFRON for about 18 years, so we're comfortable, we're very comfortable with it. We get excellent support. Computer personnel at Alpena Power are excellent with any upgrades that we need or any problems that we have. I'd be reluctant to make a change quickly, just because of the excellent service that we get. And I'm not sure, you know, we could go through a trial period and look at what the software that the city uses and how well it will adapt to what we, what we need. And there's also obviously going to be a cost to taking all of the data that we have now stored on Alpena Power's server, which is about 15 to 16 years' worth of data that would have to be downloaded and put into the city's server. Technically, I'm not, I'm not capable of doing that and no one on my staff is capable of doing it. So it would have to be something that, there would be an expense associated with it.
And I guess we also have to look at the BSN software and see what our annual costs would be associated with that as well, so.
And that was my question more than anything, is that, is that the best deal for the city at this time? Is it, are we going to do some research for it into the future? And I'd like to at least see what the cost of that changeover would be, and software and such. And, you know, obviously I'd like you to have software that's going to work and work well so you can continue to provide the service you are.
And the other thing is, they've gone through a lot of the upgrades as concerns making payments online. Putting out a, instead of the postcard bill, they actually have a full-size bill that's mailed out. It has graphs on it that show consumption, saying period of time last year. All those refinements, we've been able to use the experience that Alpena Power has with their bill. And I think we're more efficient, gaining more efficiency there because they've been through it before. The other thing that we have to consider too, is there still may be a need for doing monthly billing. And we've been doing kind of a poll of people coming in to make their payments, just offering them the option, would you like to have monthly payment? Or would you like to have quarterly payment? And they're signing their preference. Right now, it's two to one, they'd rather have monthly payment. And we'll continue doing that. And I think once we see the quarterly bills go out at the new rates, you know, you may see more people that want to do the monthly billing. So to make a wholesale change before we do all of those things might be, might not be the prudent thing to do. Something like that, I'd like to see us move in a little slower. And the cost, Alpena Power's cost to us for the service that they provide is about $15,000 a year. That's been cut back from almost $29,000. That's eliminating the meter reading, certain, meter reading charge that we used to get charged.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense. Thanks Mike.
Basically, it's my recommendations to the engineer that helps approve the attach amendment. Are you attached the amendment? I authorize the mayor and some court side to have the seat.
Bill, you've had a chance to look it over?
I have.
Nothing? You're good?
It's usually all the way out, you can assume that he'd say something else.
I move we approve the amendment to the United Water Contract.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Thank you Rich and Mike. Next up, phone, city phone system. Steve?
I'll just start off by saying that I'm kind of the end of this whole project. I get to present it and do all this fun stuff. Eric did a lot of the work on this, on the front end, assembling all the bids, you know, kind of separating the top.
Why don't you just let him do some, in case everybody doesn't know who he is?
Sorry. This is Eric Vander Veer, he's the IT director for the county. And he's probably here for, to answer any questions that I can along the way. And a big thank to him for kind of putting all this together. Like I said, I just get to do the end part here, so. The city currently operates on an aging telephone system purchased in 2005 for approximately $34,000. It's served us well, it's been expanded a few times to include most of the, or all the city buildings, including to water recycling plant. And while it's working, we've kind of debated over the last three years whether to include the, a new $60,000 to $70,000 purchase in the CIP and eventually into the budget. And have not, have decided not to do that in the past few years. But however, we started seeing problems with the phone system that we know that it's headed downhill and it's, they're harder and harder to fix now. We're running into problems where there are no longer parts on shelves. Our vendor had to go to another client to get a part for the phone system that they happened to buy two to have one on the shelf. And we bought theirs off of, off of their shelves. We had an incident this past summer, or a couple summers ago, where the voicemail system failed and we had to do just that, retrieve something. Just recently here, we had the voicemail fail again because of a power supply. No reason, just it failed. Just little things like that and we, every time something like that happens, we're paying somebody to travel here and to troubleshoot the system, so. And they actually told me on the phone one day that, you know, this thing may just fail one day and it could be thousands to fix it. And, you know, you need your phone system, we can't be without it for days and days and days, so. It's for those reasons that when Eric came to me and said, you know, he was going out for bids on a phone system, I confirmed with him to at least include us so that we could at least review the prices and kind of look at what we might want to budget in the future. And by doing that, he was able to provide me some answers on, yes, I could lease the system, I don't have to put all the money in the budget. So that's kind of what I did this way around, I put in $20,000 in this year's budget to handle that. So in August of 2013, proposals were received from several companies, with three chosen to perform joint demonstrations for the city and county. After these demonstrations, I had several conversations and discussion with the county IT department and we determined that the best overall system was, the easiest to manage for us, was from Millenia Telecom. And it also happens to be the system that was least expensive at this point. The prices are shown there, Millenia Telecom being about $65,900, Frontier being $68,000, and Merritt being $138,300. The big difference with Merritt is that they're providing a system that's completely and totally run offsite. And so you're paying them to manage it, you're paying them for all of that, that system, you're paying for that hardware rental, that hardware and things, whereas these others, you're purchasing it in-house and you're being trained to run it yourself in-house. It's my understanding, talking with Eric a little bit, that the hosted systems are, were originally made for smaller offices, things like that, that can run, you know, 10, 15 phones, things like that. I'm sure it's going to be more competitive as it gets into the future, but I think right now it's, it's not the system for us. I think we got to look for something that's hosted internally. All the prices we looked at were based on like a five-year payback. So that most of the systems come with a five-year warranty and then you pay back. And after that five, five years, it's yours. So that's kind of what we modeled everything on. The RFP required an IP-based phone system, which is more current technology than the one we already have and believe will carry us into the future with, you know, minor upgrades. To reduce the stress on the overall IT budget, I'm proposing a $20,000 down payment with an additional four years of payments with, with interest to cover the cost of the system. We do hope or expect the system to last well beyond that, that five years with some minimal upgrades. And so after reviewing the RFPs with the Alpena County and considering demonstrations from vendors, I'm recommending as IT coordinator that the city council worth the bid for the city phone systems and Millenia Telecom for the unit prices established in the RFP for hardware, software, installation, and maintenance. The overall project cost will fluctuate slightly due to the exact number of phones and other accessories. And the city will issue payment of $20,000 for this fiscal year and the remaining four years of payments for hardware and maintenance will be based on an agreement that we signed later that we'll bring back to council, of course. I mentioned the additional information, what we did get from the vendor was a lease factor of .01916, which basically, when you multiply everything out, it ends up being about a 10% interest on the lease payment. So we're paying, if we look at $65,000 and we pay 20 upfront, that first year, at the end of the first year, we would go over $45,000 and add 10% to that by the end of that four years. My plan, and I mentioned it to the vendor, that, you know, I would look to putting more in the budget and paying a little more down every year than what they suggest for payments. And he didn't say that I couldn't do that. It wasn't, and he didn't put up any red flags that said I couldn't do that, so. I would, you know, I'm looking at, it'd be around $10,000, a little over $10,000 a year. Maybe I would look at doing $12,000 or $15,000 each year and maybe pay it down faster. I don't know if anybody's got any questions on IP, the technology phone system. Basically, what we're talking about is a phone system that's entirely over the network, running on network cabling instead of on the regular phone lines. And so we run everything through our fiber backbone between the buildings and everything over, over the network and it's all separate from our main network. The switches and stuff would be, would be separate. The server that runs the software for the phone system is separate. So we're not, you know, reducing the capacity of our existing system.
I've got a couple of questions and maybe everyone else does as well. I do want to address, Susan emailed us previous to the meeting and mentioned that she may have a conflict of interest, so if you want to explain that real quick and then we'll just decide whether that's going to be an issue or not.
I did speak with Bill before the meeting. I did. And my son works for Merritt, but they are the high bidder and obviously out of the, out of the race. But my question was, is there any reason for me to abstain? And Bill didn't feel there is. However, if any of you have a problem, I'm happy to do that, of course.
Said Merritt's not in consideration anyways.
No, it isn't. You feel comfortable?
I agree, yeah, I feel comfortable with that. Not a contender at this point, so. Okay, well no action on that, thanks, I just wanted to get that cleared up before we went any further, but. I don't know if anybody else wants to lead off or start off, it's technical stuff, so I sometimes don't know what to ask. I talked to Steve a little bit before the meeting and he explained to me that Eric, Eric, why don't you, if you, yeah, why don't you work your way up, I guess? I had a couple of questions about, that weren't covered in the memo as far as exactly what did you go through in order to, in order to decide that this was a good company? I think you mentioned somewhere in here that you, that you had onsite visits that came in and one of my questions were, did you go or call any communities that, or large businesses that were using Millenia Telecom and get like a?
Actually, the biggest thing that I had, why I called a lot of the references, because our 911 system, I had to make sure that this was going to work since it is voice, it's a different type of system. And I can't, it was back in October, so it's been a little while, so. There was one of the counties in Michigan, there were a couple of counties that are using it, working great for them. I talked to a few other references they had in there that love the system. It's very easy to use. Actually, I've seen demos on it. For us, it's easy to use and administer as well. So that was one key. Larry, the salesman that worked for Millenia, he was very easy to work with. Got back a lot of questions I had, so. And that was the biggest thing. My biggest thing was the 911. Once that, we got through. And the Frontier, they did, they did, were able to work with 911 as well. But it came down to it with the pricing. So we should have no problems with our 911 system. So that was my biggest thing after that, so. All in all, I was really impressed with ShoreTel. I even did more online reviews from other people up in the United States and got a lot of good reviews with the ShoreTel product.
Okay. The, and the relationship between the county IT and the city IT, you're, I'm, because this is a bit of a joint, kind of a joint, but you're going to, the county's going to do, the county's going to upgrade their phone systems anyhow, regardless of what the city decides to do?
Yes, they have their old NorTel system and it could go anytime. We have to get this repaired. Actually, we were going to do it in October, but of our budget freeze we had, we had to hold off.
And with the, with the server, and that's where you almost completely lose me, unfortunately, but, or maybe fortunately for me. With the server that's required for this, that it's going to be on a separate server, that will be the county's or that'll be a joint server, or that, how does that work as far as like the costs for that? Or is that, because that's not included in this, that's all separate? That's all separate?
That's all included.
IT? Oh, it is?
We've, he put together a spreadsheet, and we split out those costs already.
Okay, so that's, and that's how we operate when we do stuff like that? Okay.
One nice thing about this also being a joint, not only with cost savings, we can also, the nice thing, the really cool thing about this is, I'm sure you get calls, I'm sure a lot of the partners get calls that relate to the county, and you said, well, you have to call the county, here's their phone number. You get the same thing at the county, and you have to call the city for that. Nice thing is now, we can join together, you can actually transfer, everyone will have their own.
Extension.
Station. And actually, I can transfer to someone in the city, and the city can transfer it over to the county, because it'll all be combined, so it'd be nice, one nice feature.
Very nice. That's kind of a big deal for a person that's just calling, because now we don't have to hang up.
Yeah, we don't have to, you know, they can just transfer us there, or outside, move over.
It may or may not have taken them long enough to get to the original call, to start all over. That was, I kind of, I think that's about all I had. I did have a little bit of a question earlier for Steve about, about a comment that was in the, in the memo regarding how many, that the cost may fluctuate depending on how many phones we want, or something like that. And you were just kind of getting on like future installations? Is that where you were going with that?
Well, what it comes down to is, we did a phone count earlier, September, I guess, was the phone count that we did. And I also asked people to tell me, you know, where would it be nice to have a phone? And I kind of got those, but I just have this feeling you're going to get to the install, you go, oh, you know, did somebody tell you about the phone we needed here? Yeah, we need a phone here.
Okay.
And so you add a phone here and there, you know, the ones we have now, I think, run around $280 or $300 apiece, that's about what these run. And so you get that little fluctuation in cost, and I just, I didn't want to assign a number to the contract, say, this is it.
I understand.
You know, not to exceed. You know, we could get four more phones, and we could fluctuate by $1,000. I don't think we will. I think I've got a pretty good hold on the number now.
Okay. Very good. Any others?
Yes, I assume that this is more cost-effective than if we did it separately?
Yeah, because there's several, several columns that you have, where there's a .5 and .5 in each column for what the city and the county are sharing between that backend of it.
And I've even, I've even, when it came to certain stuff, like for training, I actually went two-thirds, one-third. I broke it up even more for us, because we got, of course, got more people that have to train. So I tried to break it up as even as possible between the city and the county, so. And the nice thing, the other nice thing is, is, yes, you could probably go with a separate system, but since it is a voice system, it is going to be on the networked IT structure, it'd be nice for us, for our IT, if we handled just one phone system, it'd be great. So that way, we don't have to learn two different systems.
Got a dumb question for you, so you can roll your eyes now if you want. I mean, it's a fairly sizable price tag for phones, right? Why not just hand everybody a cell phone and call today? I mean.
I don't think you're going to, you probably get a lot of the functionality.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess I was going to bring that. Part of that is, every phone comes with software on your desktop. You have all your contacts in there, you can click on a contact, and it calls you. You know, you can click on a number, a phone number, and it'll click on, and it'll turn the phone on intercom. You're not even touching your phone, you're talking like that. And, yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying, I mean, it.
I believe also, too, this has an integration with Exchange, Outlook Exchange, so this will even help with your email. You can actually combine it. Someone gets an email with a cell number in it, just click the phone number and email, and it calls you.
And you have it automated, don't we have it automated? So if I call and I don't know the extension or who I need to call, then it gives me.
Central number for the builder, too.
Gives me, I can make decisions and stuff. I don't know if that would work with a cell system.
It's a full-blown PBX system, you can do all kinds of IVRs, menu systems, all that, right, with this system, so.
With cell phones, you can't do a transfer, can you? Or can?
Not really, no.
Right, so if I want to transfer from my, you know, to you.
Push is right.
Plus, if you want to get, you can get close to the functionality with cell phones, you're going to want to get smartphones, and you're going to be paying 60 bucks a month for just one phone, you know, for your data plan. That, over time, will start to add up, too, so.
Will any numbers change? Will the public have difficulty with any numbers?
No, all the numbers will change, will not change at all. Everything is going to be portaled over to the new system.
Good.
We are going to be, right now, we are going to be using, it's not part of this system, but we won't, we can't use Frontier, because we have to use a voice SIP system. So we are going to be contracting with Merritt to do, to handle our SIP trunking for us. I've got quotes on that. And actually, it comes in even cheaper than what we're paying right now for Frontier for the county. So I know it's going to be even cheaper for you guys when it comes to the SIP trunking, so. But you won't be paying any more, I should say that, with your phone, when you're calling, like your long distance and stuff like that.
Very good. Sounds like you did your homework, didn't you? There. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Anything we can do together is positive stuff, sure. Any action on this tonight, Steve?
Yeah, actually, to go forward with the purchase, write the agreement with Millenia Telecom.
Same.
I move we award the bid to city phone, for the city phone system to Millenia Telecom for the unit prices established.
Second. Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Anyone?
Move we adjourn the closed session?
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yep.
Walagora?
Hi.
You are watching All About Alpena.